That was enough.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge and pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The prayer today, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week, and the week in which the date falls as Police Week. That day is specifically set aside to honor and remember the officers that have made the ultimate sacrifice. To date, there's been around 100 line-of-duty deaths across this country this year. We would like to thank, we would like to honor those that have fallen. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God, Matthew 5:9, amen. Can you start us off?
Sure. On May 7, I approve Resolution Number 25-087, which is a travel encumbrance from the Commissioner's Office to attend the White House State Leadership Conference. Is it all there is?
All right. Item number 2, the Commissioner's Office requesting the board approve an Execute the Minister's meeting of April 15, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes. Financials.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Adrian Gordon from the Commissioner's Office. Today's financials include an appropriations transfer to the sheriff in their equipment account, so that they can order additional replacement inmate lockers as they discussed at their budget hearing. Among the encumbrances is a purchase order from the Commissioners to Lake Joga Recovery Centers for the jail treatment program requests out of the opioid settlement fund. Travel encumbrances from the common police court to attend the 2025 Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Conference. From Job and Family Services to attend the Ohio Job and Family Services Directors Association Fiscal Symposium. And from the Recorder's Office to attend the Ohio Recorder's Association 2025 Summer Conference. There's also a then-and-now from Water Resources to HGR Engineering for professional services rendered in March, April, and May of 2025 that were not previously encumbered. Among the vouchers is $26,402.47 from Job and Family Services to the Childcare Resource Center of Cuyahoga County for the first quarter 2025 DECA, which is Distributed Education Clubs of America Technical Assistance Programs. And $37,694.69 from Maintenance to Cable Communications for the installation of new cameras and control panels in the Joga County Office Building.
Do we know anything more about that JFS DECA program?
I do not. I did some research about it online yesterday just to try and figure out what DECA stood for.
Yeah.
But it does appear to be like a high school-oriented program in order to plug in kids in more technical job training and opportunities, so that's what it looks like.
So it's being, we're assuming it's for high school students, public school students in the county?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I mean, whenever I see money going to Cuyahoga County, I'm like, ugh.
Yeah. It's probably just, that's a place where they do a lot of the parts of the program that our kids in Joga County can take part in.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the financials.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Good morning.
Good morning.
Shane Jar with the County Engineers Office, here to present a few items today. Items 5, 6, and 7 are all requests to award projects from last Friday. Item number 5, County Engineers Office requesting the board award the bid to, oh, excuse me. Item number 4, 5, and 6, I misread. Item number 4, the Engineers Office requesting the board award and bid to Eclipse Company Incorporated the realignment of Bainbridge Road at Washington Street Traffic Signalization in Auburn Township in the amount of $575,180.57, as they represented the lowest of best bid. The bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
Shane, were there any other bidders for that project?
There were not. There was just one.
Okay. So I guess there, then what was done best?
Yeah. And our estimate was 610,000, so we're
I saw that, yeah.
We're under that, which is good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve number 4.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes. That's been talked about for 15 years.
Yep. Yep. We got a, we got a federal grant, a safety grant, to help cover some of the costs of that, so. It's a good project and it will be financially beneficial for us as well.
And a lot safer.
Yes. Item number 5, the Engineers Office requesting the board award to, the bid to Grade Line Incorporated for the replacement of the Haskins Road Bridge in Bainbridge Township in the amount of $280,896.50, as they represented the lowest of best bid, and the bid bond shall serve as the performance bond.
So this one, I saw this was over $100,000 over the Engineers estimate?
Under.
Yeah. So I, I mean, do you, or reasoning do you think for why that came in so low compared to estimate?
We looked at the units. The one area that they saved a lot of money was the actual box itself.
Okay.
We project what we think that's going to cost, and they are able to get the materials and install it for much less than what we expected.
Okay.
It's a pretty simple bridge replacement. The end treatments are very basic, so.
Mm-hmm.
And the contractor has done many of these for us, so he was able to put in a pretty nice bid, and some of the other bids were competitive with that number, but not, certainly not as low as theirs.
Yeah, well, 25-ish percent, I would think, right? Under bid, that seems like a nice discount for the county. So I'll make a motion to approve 5.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
And item number 6, the Engineers Office requesting the board award the bid to Grade Line, again, Incorporated, for the replacement of the Riverview Drive Bridge in Bainbridge Township in the amount of $515,636.45, as they represented the lowest of best bid, and the bid bond will be held as a performance bond.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
And to respond to the previous question, that one was a few thousand dollars
Yeah.
over our estimate. The end treatments are much more complicated. It's a smaller working area, kind of in a neighborhood area, so it's, it was going to pose more of a challenge, and the bid reflected that. But same contractor, two bridges, generally combined under bid, so. Under our estimate, so it should be two good bridge projects for us.
What's the stand on that?
That one, I think, is 28 feet.
Okay.
So, pretty decent-sized precast box.
Yes.
Item number 7, the County Engineers Office requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25-089 to order the asphalt resurfacing of Sperry Road, County Highway 12, Sections B through G in Newberry, Russell, and Chester Townships. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the title sheet of the specifications. And further, the resolution sets the bid opening till Friday, May 30, 2025, at 10:05 a.m. Using bid express at the County Engineers Office. Notice of the bid opening will be advertised on May 15 and on the county website.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Thank you. And a final action item for me today, item number 8. The Engineers Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25-090 to order the asphalt resurfacing of Fairmount Road, County Highway 16, Section C through B in Russell and Newberry Township. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the title sheet, and further sets the bid opening for Friday, May 30, at 10:10 a.m. Using bid express at the Engineers Office. And notice will be posted in the paper on the 15th and on our website.
I'll move to approve 8.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
And those are our last two projects for the year.
Oh.
So.
Do you feel something falls apart?
Uh, hopefully not. But at least for this construction season, that's the last projects we intend to put out for bid. I'll be back for some awards and executions and stuff like that for contracts, but those are the last two new projects for us this year.
Okay.
And overall, of all the projects, how much participation is OPWC?
Uh, they're involved in three of our county projects this year. A bridge project and two paving projects. So, there's, we do a pretty good, robust operation with the state funding, and then we have several federally funded projects this year, so.
Was it around 50% with the OPWC for the project?
Pretty close. Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Very good. Very helpful. Good morning.
Good morning.
Item number 9 is the pre-award conditions and standard assurances form for the Violence Against Women's Act Vow of Grant. $60,000 from Office of Criminal Justice Services and $20,000 local county match. That's actually an increase from the state by a couple thousand dollars, so. Where most of the grants are going down, that one increased a little bit.
Okay. What do you guys use that grant money for?
It's a deputy assigned to, typically, she goes to all domestics
Okay.
and handles the domestic situations and protection orders and all of that stuff.
I'll make a motion to approve number 9.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Number 10 is for an increase in the number of flock cameras we've got. OCJS, pre-award conditions and standards for the flock cameras. In the amount of $25,500. As you know, that's, those are the flock cameras that we've got around the county. There's 10. This is, give us another five. They've been very successful in their operation and being able to locate people. I don't know if you remember the North Carolina guy that was headed up here. They weren't sure if he's coming to kill his grandmother or not, but he showed up on the flock cameras and the police were able to stop him in Bainbridge before he even got close to Russell, so.
Oh, wow. And when, where are these new cameras going to be installed? Do we know?
The Detective Bureau kind of has a layout of where we have cameras and where we need them. Pretty much, it's, you know, entrance to the county on various roads, so we're trying to.
Larger roads, I see. Yeah, okay.
When we really don't want to make it public.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Then they avoid them.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve, which one is that, 10?
10.
10.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Elaine Walker, Maki, Community and Economic Development. We have three items on the agenda today. Number 11 is Community and Economic Development is requesting the board accept the performance bond for Country Roofing LLC for the Chagrin Falls Park Community Center Roof Replacement Project under CDBG Grant BF231AZ-1, and further release the bid bond.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Second item is Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice to proceed for Country Roofing LLC for the Chagrin Falls Park Community Center Roof Replacement Project.
And you feel confident the contractor can meet all those deadlines?
Yes. He's, he's ready to start next Monday.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just, I know how contractors can go with some of that stuff, and it's now like a tight window that they have to.
They have to be done with the project by the end of August at the very late, latest. So, I'd like to get them done a little bit early in case there was a problem.
Okay, so I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
And then my last request is the board amend the motion for May 6, 2025, to read grant permission to advertise to hold public hearing number 2 for the 2025 Community Development Block Grant CBGG Allocation Program to be held on Thursday, May 29, at 2025, at 10 a.m. And notice of this public hearing number 2 will be advertised on May 15 and on the county website.
And can you talk just about the process for awarding that grant? So, like, what happens at that hearing? When do we make a decision on?
So I was going to bring this up afterwards.
Oh, well, we could, we could.
We can do it now.
Right, whatever you want.
So we will go over, in the public hearing, we'll list all of the applications, what they're requesting, what their match funds are. We'll go through all of that.
Okay.
Usually, we have a week to make a decision.
Okay.
But since the hearing was pushed back a little bit.
Okay.
We have to make a decision that day.
Okay.
So, if you review your binders, you can see all of the applications, you can see what they're requesting, and we can talk about any of the projects then.
Okay.
But we would like to have a decision that, that day at that session.
Got it. And will you make a, I mean, just because I'm new to this process, will you make a recommendation for which?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we go through and we rank them. In your binders, they are ranked. They've got a number next to the project.
Okay.
Um, there's, there's two highest ones. We can do one project. We can do one large project. We can do two. They're pretty big projects, because they're, you know, $230,000, but
Yeah.
we can mix and match what you would like to do. You don't have to take our recommendations. You can choose whatever you'd like.
Okay, very good. So I'll make a motion to approve 13.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Did you have a question?
But, yeah. But the format for, for the state is, it's a two-year cycle.
It is a two-year cycle.
And they'd like to have one or two projects.
Yes.
Because years ago.
We can do, we can do two, because we're under $300,000. So that's our maximum, is two projects.
Years ago, we used to do five or six or seven.
We did.
And help little projects, like 20,000 or 35,000 or whatever, but now, that's, that's what we.
The last grant cycle, they switched that up and changed it to maximum of two projects.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot to learn. It's a moving target sometimes.
It's a lot of information, and we have to have the applications in by July 11. So that's why we have to make a decision, because then we have to do a couple of resolutions after that, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number 14, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 25-091 honoring Lake Joga United Head Start Incorporated on celebrating its 60th anniversary.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
My mom was a Head Start Director. So this was one near and dear to my heart.
Good.
Yeah, that's how she retired. She was, she started as a teacher and worked her way up and retired as a director.
Of course she did. Kristy, you want to do this next, next one?
Yeah, these are, this is the, I think this is the third year in that they have submitted a request to the Commissioner's Office requesting a resolution of award for all of the Girl Scouts in Northeast Ohio that completed their Gold Award. There are 31 this year, and it's a little down from last year, but like, we were talking this morning that there's a next group that'll be coming up next year that I'm sure the number will increase again. So there is, out of the 31, there is one girl from Joga County, and that is Cecilia Asia, and that is designated on the agenda, and she is from?
South Russell.
South Russell, yes. The rest of them seem to be from Strongsville, Macedonia, Haynesville, Rocky River, Independence, Canalville, Carisburg, and Medina, Williamsville, Kent. They're, they're.
Canalville.
Yeah, they're, they're all, Popley, Chagrin Falls, Wade Hill, Eastlake, Twinsburg, Kent, Poland, Matonia, Hudson, Chagrin Falls, Portland, and Westlake. So, I'm just asking that we approve a resolution for each one of them on achieving their Gold Award. Each one of them has their own resolution number, and their projects were very different from each other.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Well, the girls got from South Russell Village. What was her project?
No. It had a name that I didn't know what it was. It's some sort of art project. I'll pull it up.
She was the Art Ed Corner.
Yes. Art Ed Corner, which I, I don't know what that means, but I'm sure it was a great project. So I'm going to make separate motions for all of these. I'm just joking.
Whatever you want to do.
Just going to stretch out.
You know we would do it if you wanted to.
I know. You guys are so loyal.
You have to stop 62 pages.
Well, I know. So we might as well make 62 motions. That's what I'm thinking.
But then you also have to figure out how to pronounce all the names, so.
I don't. Somebody else needs to read. All right, so I'll just make a motion to approve number 15.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Number 16, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board cancel the session on Tuesday, May 20, 2025, due to a lack of a quorum.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
And along with that, number 17, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board amend the 2026 tax budget hearing schedule to move the hearings from Tuesday, May 20, 2025, to Thursday, May 29, 2025, and Tuesday, June 3, 2025.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes.
Okay, this one's made. So, we sent the letter to First Energy regarding the Middlefield Service Shop being closed, and in there, we, we put a little bit of a threat that if they still decided to go through with that closure, we would file comments in First Energy's base distribution rate case. So, based on our discussion last week, it seemed pretty clear that they are going forward with closing that, closing that line shop. And I was hoping to be able to file this when all the Commissioners were here, but unfortunately, the, the comments are due mid to late next week, so we need to make a, to handle that action this week. So were you able to review the letter?
I did. I reviewed it. It's direct and to the point. I like it, so would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to send the letter as drafted to, or I guess we want to file the letter with the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Birkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Birkin.
Yes. Okay, I think that's all we have. Discussion?
That's it? That was it?
Any? So now we'll move to item number 19, public comment. Are there any public comment?
Could you explain that last one?
You have to state your name.
Christine Stenzel. Christine Stenzel.
Okay. And your, where you live?
Chardon.
Chardon. Great.
Just the board discussion about the last item, number 18. What is it with First Energy?
First Energy is closing their service center in Middlefield, and this is just the Commissioner's response to that.
Okay. I didn't catch where it was closing, so, Middlefield.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention, Adam from the Health Department, just want to mention we had our discussion at these fishing events last week. Mr. Devorek has put that on now for a couple of years.
10.
10. And about 52 kids come out, which was a great showing from the different schools in Joga County. And the sheriff showed up and his deputy, and that was awesome as well, because you got to see the fire trucks, see the sheriffs, and fun was had by all, so. Supposed to say thank you again.
That's always a good event. I was sad we got our budget hearings during that.
Right, right. It's, we had 52 kids. They all caught fish. Some caught.
That's a big group, too.
Yeah.
That was a big group.
Some caught numerous fish. One was a 14-inch catfish.
Okay.
And a lot of pictures was taken for that. And the kids just get so excited and they, they light up, you know? And they're outside, usually cooped up in the classroom or whatever, but these are special needs kids, and they really look forward to it. And the teachers, and the teachers' aides. It's a scheduled field trip now with all the schools. So, it's, it's always a good, good feeling to give back and to create a utopia for these kids that, you know, they just have a normal day outside enjoying the great outdoors.
The catfish was interesting here. You know, one of the kids thought it was a shark. Somebody else thought it was the size of a boat. It was, you know, it was.
You mean, it was, it was this big?
Yeah. It was a very massive fishing, but it was, it was quite the tale. It was full of that cat.
Wow, they're starting their fish stories young. That's good. And were there golf carts again this year?
Oh, yes.
All right. So that's, I know that's the highlight for a lot of those kids, is just taking them ride around in the, in the golf cart.
Pleasant Hills Golf Course let us borrow their golf carts to, when the, school buses come in, the kids get off the bus with their schoolteachers and aides, and so we get them on the golf carts. We take them out to the fishing docks. And then we bring them back in, and they have, they bring their own picnic lunch about 11:30 or so. We have lunch together. And without, and the golf carts are donated by them for the, for the day. And then the night before, O'Reilly Equipment, they pick it up, pick up the golf carts, and they bring them in there at 7 o'clock by clockwork, and then they pick them up at 1 o'clock and take them back to the golf course. And it's just, it's just all, and I'm on the phone three, three months before the event, and double-checking everything, see if we could still do this and still do that. So, it's just a great cooperation and partnerships with so many people in Joga County. And Chardon and Munson Fire Department were there, and they helped out, and they brought their own. Chardon has a gator, so it was, the kids love to see first responders, red fire trucks. You know, they, they pose for pictures with the, with the firemen and everything else. It was, it was just a great, great day. So, thanks for bringing that up, Adam. Any other public comment?
Howard, South Russell Village. This being Memorial Day, 2025, let's keep in mind the 60,000 young men and women who died unnecessarily and keep them in our thoughts and prayers so it never happens again. Thank you.
Amen to that. Any other public comment? Hearing none. I make a motion to adjourn. Second.